Good morning. Welcome to this joint workshop between City Council and the Utility Advisory Committee on August 10, 2022. I will call the meeting to order. Items listed on our agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. Madam City Clerk, could we have a confirmation of the posting of the agenda in the roll call?
Yes, thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and we have Council member Matt Fox absent, and committee members Greg Todd, Lloyd Anderson, and Howard Anala, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll begin with the Pledge of Legions.
(Pledge of Legions) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with our initial public comment period. Public comment during this period is related to items on the agenda for action. Is there anyone present that would like to speak? You will have up to five minutes, and we ask, as always, that anyone be civil and concise. All right, seeing no one present, we will take any phone calls for public comment to the phone number 702-589-9629. Committee Workshop. Anyone wishing to call in, the phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for public comments?
No comments were received.
Hearing no one, we will close the initial public comment period and move to our first item. Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure. Today, we have our outside counsel, Attorney Anne Pong Grants, here with us, and she's going to provide a presentation about Boulder City's utilities contracts with other government agencies. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Anne, and she has a wonderful presentation for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tetter. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And first of all, I'd like to just say thank you for being here. It's not every public body that would voluntarily schedule a session to be briefed on contracts. And I think it's a very good sign about Boulder City that you're here today and that you're interested, because a lot of people think of this as very dry stuff, and because of that are not interested in delving in. I brought a copy of my binders of the contracts that are going to be summarized today, so just bear in mind, if it gets dull, you know, you're avoiding reading about an eight-inch stack of documents. But I want to encourage you, as we work our way through this presentation, to ask any questions as they come up, as you think of them. And then we can also, as we wind through it, if there are any issues that require more thought, you know, please feel free to raise those as well. And Joe Stupitz has agreed to take a note of anything we need to follow up on later. Secondly, I'd like to say thank you to Brittany Walker, Mr. Tetter, and Joe, for the experience of working with them over the past couple of months. This has been very interesting for me. And I think you have a terrific team here, very talented, intelligent, thoughtful people. And you have a lot of challenges ahead, but you are, I think, very well-served by your staff. So let's jump in, and, as I say, welcome to the wonderful world of Boulder City's utilities contracts with other government agencies. It's a highly collaborative environment, thank you, that these folks operate in. So we'll start with a question. How are your utilities operations supported by your agreements with other government agencies? There's several different types of contracts that we're going to talk about today. One are the interlocal cooperative agreements, and then we're going to look at some other types of agreements that Boulder City uses in its water and electric utility operations, principally your mutual assistance agreement with the Colorado River Commission, and your hydropower agreements for both Hoover and Salt Lake Power. So we'll look at, first of all, what are interlocal cooperative agreements? I didn't even know these things existed when I started out as a lawyer at the Colorado River Commission in 2007. They are a fascinating creature in the law, because they make it possible for government agencies to work together collaboratively and save costs, share planning in ways that do not exist in many other states. So we'll look at just what is this creature that is the interlocal cooperative agreement? Then we'll look at how does this apply to Boulder City in particular? And then we'll have kind of a couple of slides on getting to know you. Who are the other government agencies that Boulder City's utility operations engages with under these agreements, and what's authorized by each of them? Okay, so first of all, what are interlocal cooperative agreements? They were created under NRS 277. They allow Nevada public agencies to work together with, and that's a pretty broad definition, political subdivisions, to perform any governmental function. So these can be created throughout Nevada government, and they can include, but are not limited to, sharing people, personnel, workload, and even payment of money. And NRS 277-105 states that the participants in an interlocal cooperative agreement may establish a permanent administrative entity to perform all of these functions. And you'll see that that is the provision that has been key for the creation and operation, for example, of S&amp;WA. Now, why would a local government want to get involved in these? There's a lot of different reasons. Some of them boil down to money. You know, it may make a lot of sense for folks to get together, and if everybody has to do the same thing, only have it done once by one group of people, rather than having each local government, for example, do it on their own. Now, there may be reasons, in some instances, a local government would not want to do that. There are certainly unique issues, and unique problems, and unique situations that local governments don't want to share. But where there's a lot of overlap, it can well make sense to say, hmm, okay, let's all do it together, and then maybe we will together pay two-thirds of what it would cost us if we were all going to do it separately. You can qualify for volume discounts, buying as part of a larger group, avoid duplication of efforts, which is something in government I think we always want to do. You can share resources, like share employees. Support joint planning for shared priorities, for example, water conservation, and participation in terms of improving the pricing for electric power that is being purchased. And at times, government agencies really benefit from coming together and having a single position and a single approach in advocating on public issues. So in terms of advocacy, again, sometimes it makes sense to work together, sometimes it makes sense to act separately. Then the next question would be, how? How do members of an interlocal cooperative work together? It always has to start with an interlocal cooperative agreement. Now, of course, agencies can choose to work together informally. This does not displace any form of informal collaborative. But if a group of agencies believe it would make more sense for them to do something over the longer term, it usually makes sense to execute an agreement that will lay out the responsibilities, and the priorities, and cost allocation, and all the other substantive terms that have to be entered into if you're going to have a stable, long-term working relationship. One thing that the agencies can't do through an interlocal cooperative agreement is hand off to somebody else their responsibility to pay timely, right, or perform timely. If Boulder City has a responsibility to do something at a certain point in time, under a certain statute, Boulder City can't hand that responsibility off to others. Okay, so let's look at what the agreements are, the interlocal cooperative agreements are, that Boulder City is involved in, in the utility space. First of all, and probably the most important one, is the S&amp;WA Interlocal Cooperative Agreement of 1991, as it's been amended over time. Then there's also an S&amp;WA Facilities and Operations Agreement, and then the Silver State Energy Association Interlocal Cooperative Agreement, and the SSEA, the acronym for Silver State Energy Association, the SSEA Power Supply Management Agreement. So we'll be looking at four agreements here. And next, who do you contract with? Who are your counterparties? Who are you collaborating with under these agreements? Big Bend, Henderson, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, CCSD, LVVWD, the Water District, S&amp;WA, and, under the Silver State Energy Association, also the state agency, the Colorado River Now, S&amp;WA would not exist but for the interlocal cooperative agreement that created it in 1991. It's created explicitly under the NRS 277 I mentioned at the very beginning. And it was created because there was a desire back then, even back then, to come up with a collaborative approach for Southern Nevada, in terms of how we're going to handle water over the longer term. So managing, treating, delivering water, managing a comprehensive conservation and drought contingency plan, and managing and operating the regional water system. Those are, especially in these drought days, very huge responsibilities, and it's very important that the agencies come together, have come together, and worked on them together. There are times when each municipality, though, has to think about, are we doing enough, or are we doing too much, through this collaborative process? And that's a question I just want to plant in your minds, so that you think about it. Because S&amp;WA, for example, is a much larger organization than any of its member agencies. So there will be times when there might be additional resources required. If Boulder City has something that it really wants to get through S&amp;WA or from S&amp;WA, but I just want to say that you may have to invest in an additional resource of some type to be your advocate within S&amp;WA. Because S&amp;WA is such a major organization, they are a, and they will be with us probably for all of our lifetimes, even the youngest among us, they will be a big factor in Southern Nevada. So I encourage you to continuously think about, are we approaching S&amp;WA in the most effective way to serve the needs of Boulder City? Okay, so let's take a look at the faces there. The Board of Directors, you can see they have a board that's comprised of a representative from each of their member agencies. Marilyn Kirkpatrick from the Water District, Dan Stewart from Henderson, James Adams. Now, is that still the current, are you still the current one? Okay, so you may have some more stories to share with us, right? We'd be interested in hearing that later. James Gibson for Big Bend, Cedric Krier, the City of Las Vegas, Justin Jones, CCWRD, and Scott Black from North Las Vegas. They also have a very strong executive team. John Enslinger, who was their chief lawyer for many years, stepped up when Pat Mulroy left to become their general manager. Dave Johnson's their deputy general manager. Colby Pellegrino is now their deputy general manager for resources. Doha Ross, their deputy general manager for engineering. Kevin Bethel, their CFO, and Greg Walsh, their general counsel. So they, this is a, these folks are really, as my experience, large and in charge. Now, what do they do for Boulder City's water utility? Boulder City is a water, the water utility is a purveyor member of S&amp;WA. S&amp;WA provides treats and delivers wholesale raw and potable water to Boulder City, for Boulder City then to turn around and provide to its retail customers, and also provides related services, like water testing. Now, they don't do this directly. They do it through the Las Vegas Valley Water District. So if S&amp;WA and LVVWD were corporations, LVVWD would be the operating company, right? So it's almost as if S&amp;WA is the holding company, and LVVWD is the operating company. So for example, when I was general counsel to the phone company, I was shocked to discover, after I'd been working there for a couple of years, I actually didn't work for the local phone company. I worked for Sprint United Management Company in Kansas, right? Very similar. All the employees of S&amp;WA are actually employees of LVVWD. So they are the operating agent, the operating company for the S&amp;WA. S&amp;WA has no employees of their own. The general manager and the officers we just went through are appointed by the board and serve the LVVWD in the same capacity. Were there any questions about that?
Yeah, just, is there, Larry Carr, did they, is there a separate building? It's just a trivial question, I guess, but do they work in the same building and work with each other, or does S&amp;WA say, okay, we work for Las Vegas Water District, Valley District, but we have a separate area, and we basically do this aspect for S&amp;WA?
Yeah. The, they're divided up. So at Valley View and Charleston, there's a big Las Vegas Valley Water District building where many of the employees reside. In addition, though, you've probably seen when you go around on the 95, there's the Molaski Building that has a great big, like stainless steel rain dropout front facing the highway, facing north. That's the, the S&amp;WA senior management people are housed in that office building. That also houses a number of other people. But for example, the energy services folks who Joe and Brittany work with are primarily in the S&amp;WA, in the building that S&amp;WA occupies, but they're supported by some folks in the Water District Building. Any other questions about how those work together? Yes?
I'm just curious, the year fact, and maybe I'm jumping ahead, and we're talking about Boulder City having advocacy, you know, a role in advocacy for itself within the S&amp;WA. And I know that we do have a Boulder City resident as a representative on the Integrated Resource Planning Advisory Committee. So I was curious how that fits in with that, that we go beyond just being a member, we do have a member.
Yeah, actually, I'm not familiar with that. Brittany, or Joe, or?
I believe there's a woman named Carol Jeffries, if she's still the representative that we.
I believe she is.
Yeah, okay.
There's a number of advisory committees that assist the S&amp;WA in policymaking. There's a groundwater advisory committee, et cetera, so there's various committees, much like we have the utility advisory committee that helps the council make decisions. They have similar committees, so I imagine the integrated resources committee is something of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I did have a question regarding this original 1991 agreement, and how, as you mentioned, it's been amended over time. The little bit that I've read on it, I know Mr. Carr has done far more research on it, but because Boulder City had its own allotment, its own water system, all of those things, when Boulder City became one of the purveyors with S&amp;WA, there were certain things that were written into that agreement that sets Boulder City apart, in some ways, from the other agencies that are part of this. You know, the one particular that came up recently was the fact that with the capital improvements that S&amp;WA periodically agrees to do, or determines to do, Boulder City is not charged the same fees that other purveying agencies are charged to pay for those capital improvements. Is there, is there any information that you could expound on regarding that special status of Boulder City within that agreement?
Yeah. Well, I would want to provide you, I'll give you a quick answer, and then I can give you a follow-up response a little later. I will admit that as I was going through the various versions of the agreement, the '91, '94, '95, the amount of specifics in terms of the numbers of the water coming in and the water going out, and how that interrelated with the capital budgets, is pretty complicated. So I don't have a quick answer for you, but I can trace it through and give you an answer as a follow-up.
All right, thank you.
It is, I actually tried to map it on a matrix, just for my own purposes, and then I thought, this will probably take more time than I would want to bill to the city.
I just have this vision of quadratic equations, you know, it sounds like a nightmare to try and figure all of that out.
Right, right. But it's an important question, right? And the city needs to know what its rights are, so.
And again, at least from what I've seen of it, the reason that was done is because of the conservative growth policies that Boulder City has had in place for our residents to not be paying for these capital projects that are based on growth, the rapid growth of the Vegas Valley. And, you know, it seems to be that there was an agreement that, well, okay, Boulder City, because of its conservative growth, does not put these demands on the system that require these ongoing improvements to be made, and therefore, the residents of Boulder City are not going to be tasked with paying for those improvements.
I can speak to that a little bit. So essentially, in our cooperative agreement, you're correct, I don't know the policy rationale as to whether it was Boulder City's low-growth policy. When I read it, essentially, Boulder City does not contribute to the MCCP, which is essentially the capital improvement plan for the Southern Nevada Water Authority. And the primary reason is because the infrastructure that the district builds does not serve Boulder City. It serves the Las Vegas metropolitan area, and all those members benefit. That's why all of those members contribute to the MCCP in a much bigger way than Boulder City does. Boulder City has its own fee that we pay that's completely separate in the agreement, and that's the primary reason, is just we don't benefit from that infrastructure, so it really shouldn't be on our entity to pay for it.
Thank you. And I know as an example, when what's referred to as the Third Straw was constructed, that was something that Boulder City, I believe Boulder City's portion of that was $8 million. That was something that was charged to Boulder City, and, you know, became something the residents were responsible for. So what I'm getting at is, when we hear about rates going up in Las Vegas for, whether it's the Las Vegas Valley Water District, or Henderson, or one of the others, you know, how is that going to impact Boulder City? Because this came up recently, that, oh, we're going to have a rate increase, but it appears that that did not apply to Boulder City.
Each of these situations has to be looked at very specifically, and I would, though, caution about trying to understand things from a cultural perspective, or in terms of a philosophy. The more I look into what were people thinking, for example, back in 1991, the less I understand about it. And even when I, you know, I've done a lot of research on what happened before the dam was built, and why did people participate, and why has Arizona always been so difficult to deal with, all those kinds of interesting questions, right? It can be in the eye, the answers are often spoken in the eye of the beholder, that it's hard, then, for us to really understand at a point in time today. So what we have to look at, my recommendation is to look at instead, let's like, take a look at what's actually on the piece of paper. And if we need to push back on something, we can push back on something. But we can't take for granted that folks who, you know, may not even have been in high school yet, when the 1991 agreement was executed, will give any credence whatsoever to an understanding about Boulder City's low-growth policies back then. You know, just, in terms of a recommendation of how to approach these things, let's just keep our eyes open, take a look at what comes across the transom, and do we need to take a stronger advocacy position on one matter or another in view of Boulder City's current priorities, which can also evolve.
Thank you. And again, you know, the point being, and I agree with you, we shouldn't try and analyze how these things came about. The fact is, they did come about, and that appears to be what's in the agreement, and for us to have that understanding when we deal with S&amp;WA, because apparently, S&amp;WA never said Boulder City was going to begin paying these increased fees. It was an assumption that was made by our staff, rather than saying, just as you had suggested, that we go to the paper and see what's on that paper.
Yeah. This is partly why it's so fascinating, right?
And why we have you.
So anything further before we get into the guts of the '91 agreement?
I think that's, if I can add just a little, as you say, there's probably three things to start with. What are our rights? What are legal issues we might want to be concerned with? And what are our obligations? And so I think those are three things that we want to do. And I think with the cooperative agreement and the infrastructure agreement, that's where things do get, you're very, right, it's very confusing. So we have three different water allocations that need to be completely clarified, and then we have the different aspects of what percentage Boulder City pays. So we have a percentage that we pay in the cooperative agreement, and then we have percentages that we pay in the infrastructure agreement. So you're exactly right, it's in the paperwork, but it's hard to follow.
Right. And it's hard to document, because you have, it's almost like you can map out the water piece of it, and the cost allocation piece of it over time, but marrying them up is very challenging, and then translating it into current reality. very challenging and then translating it into current reality.
Right. And making sure you can understand which, how the amendments flow is, is a little confusing too. But yes, if we go through this document, those are things I think we definitely want to understand. And in the future, if we can get a breakdown of how the invoices are charged to us, then we can understand in what section we're being charged, what percentage we're being charged for that aspect, and what we're currently paying for would be very helpful, I would think.
I would just, just to bring it back, the presentation is really intended to be a high-level overview of all the agreements, so that you, so you have the, the structural view, the forest through the trees, if you will, you know, so that detail can, you know, we can look through and follow up. But this, this presentation is really meant to be a forest through the trees type of view.
I appreciate that. What I was trying to do is just, since it was brought up and you were saying in the future, then I was just saying, these are things that would be nice to understand. I understand. No, I'm not asking for the sections today. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking just, as we go through it, if we can sort of see where they would, how that would fall out, that was what I'm asking.
Yeah. It is, it is interesting and we can talk about it in terms of follow-up and what would be most helpful. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Shamo.
Part of the confusion might be the fact that the way it was originally set up is that most of, almost all of Boulder City's culinary water, all the culinary water comes up from a treatment plant located down at the lake and comes up through Hemingway Valley. And then the only thing that goes up through the, on the other side of the mountain where the River Mountain facility is, and that's where all the money is in the huge facility, is just the raw water. And so we pay a portion of the pumping costs and whatever it takes to get that raw water to deliver to Boulder City. But the bulk of Boulder City is, is in the existing plant that was built back in the 70s and that's what comes up this way. So a lot of the costs associated with everything that happens nowadays is with the River Mountain facility and not necessarily down at the lake.
Thank you. Right, right. And that's something that Brittany and Joe and I have talked about in terms of, it's almost, that piece of it can be drawn, you know, and, but then marrying that to the details of the interlocal agreements is yet, get to be done, I think. Yeah. Okay, well, great. Thanks, everybody. That was a very stimulating discussion. So let's go, look into it a little deeper. So this was the, our first cooperative, interlocal cooperative agreement was 1991. It's the agreement that created the SNWA. The goals of the 91 agreement, to provide a mechanism for allocating, just as we're talking about now, all Colorado River water and the cost of the water, including allocated water that is unused in any given year. There was a desire to act in a unified and cooperative manner in the programs like allocation of water, salinity control, wheeling return, return flows and discharge and use of effluent. And that last one, as we all know, is getting to be a bigger and bigger piece of the analysis these days. To act in a unified and cooperative manner, to obtain additional water where it can be done, from underground basins, the Virgin River and the Colorado River. And this is one area, getting additional water supply from various areas is one area where there's actually been some real major successes accomplished as a result of the collaborative approach and the various member agencies participating with SNWA. There's water that Southern Nevada just wouldn't have had access to but for the group coming together. Preparing, this is something nobody likes to work on, but we all know needs to be done, preparing and implementing a water shortage sharing plan among purveyor members and acknowledging that availability of Colorado River water is dependent on the existence of adequate return flows to the river and treatment of reuse water. This area is becoming, seems to be every eight to 10 years, the return flow credit and reuse water becomes controversial again as people want to reuse gray water or come up with it. There's a new proposal for a form of ceiling tiles or roof tiles that will actually try to cool, they'll have a cooling component in a roof tile that's cooled by water that can be used and it can be pretty dirty water, but cooled by water on the roof that will then lower the temperature inside, which will then lower the, the need for air conditioning. Well, that's controversial now because it actually cuts down on reu, return of reuse water to the river. So a lot, lot of different components here. The 91 agreement, the structure, the framework has held up well.
Anne, quick, quick question?
Yes.
The other slide, you had one that said shortage sharing plan. Is that, is that plan available or is it still being worked on? Because I don't know if I've seen this, there's a shortage, that we've seen how each member's going to be sharing a shortage.
Yeah. I think the shortage sharing has been, the shortage sharing plan that's referred to here, I believe, is the federal plan agreed to by the seven lower basin states.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And so when, you know, for example, the current controversy over, Nevada gets 300,000 acre feet of water allocated out of the river, California gets 4 million. Who's going to share the shortages when we're experiencing them as we are today? That shortage sharing plan.
Okay. Well, I guess, but, and there is talk, I think it was in the paper or something, that the SNWA is working with California and Arizona to get that additional water shortage that's.
Exactly.
Coming out. Now, so is that a plan that would be, so that plan is still being worked on then?
Right. It was planned by, this is the plan that was approved by the Circuit of Interior.
Yes.
And is still being, it's still very controversial. I think there are actually hundreds of people working on how that's all going to sort out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not going to be pretty. There's, one of the proposals is to actually pay California farmers to move to the southeastern United States, just as an example. What would that entail? Well, they've already cut way back, for example, on rice farming and cotton farming, which probably should never have been in California anyway. But, you know, I cling to the hope that it's true that money flows upstream, that water flows upstream towards money and that we have enough money here. But not, 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 not clear yet. Okay, so look at the framework. That's, this framework gave SNWA, all the members came together and said, SNWA, you can be the entity to acquire new water rights and to manage water resources and to acquire, finance, construct, operate and maintain facilities for the storage, transport and delivery and treatment of that water. Now, that doesn't mean that local agencies don't have their own, but it does mean that, that SNWA can be the entity that does the piece of it that, where there's a benefit of the collaborative. Develop a water budget and water conservation shortage sharing plans, contract with CRC, my former client, to use its Southern Nevada Water System for treatment and transportation of water at the, at the Southern Nevada Water System Lake Mead intake. CRC used to operate that before it was turned over to SNWA as a result of the 91 agreement. And then set forth the water and reuse water supplies allocated to each member. Now, a couple of things SNWA can't do. SNWA is explicitly prohibited from restricting the jurisdiction of federal or state, local public, federal, state or local public entities. They are prohibited from duplicating functions performed by a member in the member service area unless the member's governing body, like you guys, approves it. And they can't own or operate municipal sewage facilities. Now, this agreement has evolved over the years. One of the, one of the things that's been added is that it can now reallocate new water resources. It can make, it can help members to make intermittent water supplies available to other members, so it improves sharing. It can transfer to SNW, they did transfer, as I just mentioned, to SNWA CRC's interest in the Southern Nevada Water System. And then recognize updates to Southern Nevada Water contracts with the United States, like what I was just speaking with Mr. Carr about.
Anne, on that slide too. As far as it relates to Boulder City, if you go back to that slide right quick?
Yep.
The top one, reflect and allocate new water resources. So if I understand correctly, Boulder City in the cooper, in the infrastructural contract, the 2012, has elected not to participate in new water allocations. So it's in, it's in section 5.3.
Okay. That's a piece of the history I haven't looked at.
Oh, okay. So that's, I just something I want, so that, those are things that reflect Boulder City and I was just trying to make sure I understood things broadly.
Okay. Well, Joe, we'll look at that, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So the SNWA Cooperative Agreement addresses electric power as well as water utility issues. So even as far back as 91, SNWA has given the authority to operate its own electric generation transmission facilities, buildings and structures. The 95 amended cooperative agreement added to SNWA's powers, the power to the full extent permitted by law to acquire and sell electric power at wholesale and retail within the state. And then the 2012 agreement states that major, that the SNWA's major construction and capital plan shall provide for SNWA to perform any of its other conferred functions as it's using the cooperative agreement, including operating electric facilities and assets for generation, transmission and distribution. So the 90, the 2012 agreement, rather, really reinforced SNWA's role in the electric utility So the next agreement we're going to look at quickly is the SNWA Facilities and Operations Agreement. And this is the agreement that put more detailed terms for their operations of the SNWA, the SNS Water System and delivery of water to each purveyor member. It has detailed provisions regarding charges and payments, including that separate charge for Boulder City for improvements required to serve Boulder City, not all others. But it can include power delivery facilities and facilities for ozone and other enhanced water treatment in addition to Boulder City's portion of the debt reserve. And as we've discussed earlier, that's a little different for Boulder City than it is for the others. Wholesale delivery changes and the Facilities and Operations Agreement sets forth purveyor members' duties to use every reasonable effort to maintain and operate their own delivery system and water production and treatment system. So it reinforces the duties of the local governments to take care of their utility facilities.
And also, if it's helpful, it might be helpful to understand that I believe Big Bend is similar to Boulder City in that they pay, I believe it's in lieu of charge instead of the rest of it. So that's, and that's in the contract. It states what the members pay and what they don't. Well, it doesn't say what they don't pay, it just says they do something different. So there is a section or a couple of sections in there.
I can see, you've really had an opportunity to delve into this since I worked with you on the Hoover stuff.
So it's just one of those things, it's, knowing that somebody else has a similar aspect might be easy to follow or, or know that's something to help with.
Definitely.
Thanks.
Okay. So what other interlocal cooperative agreements impact Boulder City's utility operations? The biggest one is the Silver State Energy Association Interlocal Cooperative Agreement entered into in 2007. So that brought together Lincoln County Power District, Overton Power District, SNWA, CRC and Boulder City. And that 2007 agreement created the Silver State Energy Association. So who manages the SSEA? As in contrast to the SNWA, we have, they too have a board of directors. So Bob Reese is the chair of the CRC. He chairs the SSEA, rather, and he's the CRC Assistant Director of Engineering. And so he's the fellow who's actually responsible for the work that CRC does on behalf of Boulder City and other member agencies. Now, I know the second item on there is, is outdated, but it is still what's on the SSEA website, Joe, so I think we need to change that. I just noticed that when I was looking that, that before I came down. Jack Nelson from Overton, Ed Wright from Lincoln and Dave Johnson, again, from SNWA. The SSEA manager is Scott Krantz. And Scott is the lead fellow from SNWA for the electric services work that they do, for example, with Brittany and Joe. And here, the member agency representatives, we have Mr. Stubitz, the CRC is Gail Bates, Overton, Mendis Cooper, and Lincoln County is Dave Latrell. So I know from my work for CRC, Mendis and Dave are very solid guys and know a lot about the, the electric business. So what can the SSEA do for Boulder City? Under the terms of the SSEA Interlocal Cooperative Agreement, they can own, finance and operate projects for generation, acquisition, disposition, transmission, distribution of electric power. So they can buy and sell electric power and related fuel and financial instruments and ancillary services and transmission on behalf of members, acquire property, hire personnel, enter into contracts and borrow money. For example, there's, there's always borrowed money involved when you're involved in major power purchasing. So there are a whole series of agreements that can be entered into by SSEA on behalf of the members in order to facilitate power purchasing. So we'll look at, SSEA has its own project service agreements. A couple of them have been entered into and have expired. So the Project Service Agreement Number One for Joint Generation Resource Planning and Evaluation and Two A, which was regarding the Eastern Nevada Transmission Project, the term of these agreements has expired. They could be revived, especially the second one at some point, but right now, the term of the agreements has expired. The term of the project services, but Project Services Agreement Number Three is still in effect and it's concurrent with the terms of the SSEA Interlocal Cooperative Agreement. So this is the agreement under which SSEA does most of its work. Buy and sell electric power and fuel for the projects, financial instruments, ancillary services and transmission or other services for operating, scheduling, hedging, optimizing each SSEA member's electric power resources, to be, the power resources that you need in order to serve your customers' needs. The PSA Number Three does recognize that each SSEA member has a different set of power supply needs and those are set out in service schedules. So they're basically attachments to the interlocal agreement itself. Do you have a question, Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes. It says the term of the Project Services Agreement, blah, blah, blah. What is that term?
I think, right, you know, let me check, I'll, I'll check right when I get off, okay? And, and I'll get back to you. It's long. In fact, it can't be indefinite, but it kind of has always felt that way to me.
Okay. Thank you.
But let me mention that there's no obligation on the point of the members to purchase anything under this agreement if they don't wish to. So it's not a situation where, once they join the SSEA, they need to come to SSEA to serve all of their power needs. That discretion is left to the members until, you know, if a member decides to do a long-term contract through SSEA, that long-term contract term would, would apply. But if, in terms, if they decide, for example, to purchase certain types of power on the market or develop their own generating capability, that doesn't need to go through SSEA, although it could. You know, if, if, for example, a member agency felt they could benefit from using SSEA members as customers of a power generating source. So there's a lot of opportunities there. Let's see. Oh, the, as one, this last item is important, that they're, they have a risk control committee. And this risk control committee, it's comprised of the SSEA members and there is a, an energy risk management policy. Back in the 90s, there were some issues with power trading involving various local government agencies in Southern Nevada. The risk management policy was enacted by the SSEA members to ensure that none of these members would be adversely affected by power trading through the SSEA. So if anyone is interested in risk management, taking a look at the risk, the risk, energy risk management policy would probably be a good thing. Then a couple of other agreements. The Guarantee Agreement, I've mentioned that there's always borrowed money involved when you're trading power back and forth on the markets. So this is the Financial Guarantee Agreement that SSEA uses when it purchases and sells wholesale electric power under the WSPP. It used to be called the Western States Power Pool. It's a group of almost 300 members who do bilateral power contracting and It's a group of almost 300 members who do bilateral power contracting and it includes municipalities, member utilities, power providers, financial institutions, and there are a set of terms and conditions that apply universally. So the Guarantee Agreement is what protects people's money. Okay, so we're almost done, hang in there. There are a couple of other agreements that impact the utility operations. One is the Mutual Assistance Agreement with Colorado River Commission and the other is the Federal and State Hydro Power Agreements.
And, or I guess maybe even Joe or Brittany, I know this is, I guess when I first read the agenda, I didn't see it completely clearly that it is only government contracts, but we have now a solar agreement, agreement that would be nice to get some legal review on to get an understanding. Is that something we could do in the future?
Yeah, we can talk about doing that. It's essentially our town type power purchase agreement. I believe it's five megawatts, is that correct, Joe?
So when I look at this list, I would think it would be, it would be part of that list, even though it's not, because that's what partly utility, it helps the utilities, so.
Sure, yeah, this is focused on just our cooperative agreements with governments and the structure of those and, so that's, that's, you're correct, that's what this is focused on.
That's what the agenda is, just for future, I guess.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of agreements in the energy space that Joe and Brittany work on. And, yes.
Just, and maybe I'm jumping ahead right here, but you know, I notice on here, we talk about Glen Canyon Hydropower and obviously, big issue is, you know, they could be reaching dead pool as far as power goes, you know, very soon and they're, we're actually withholding water to try and keep that from happening. But with us getting some of our power and wanting to purchase, what happens with that agreement for us and whether we have that, I have that, we have that answer right here in front of us. But what happens if they aren't able to generate power and we have this, this agreement to purchase power from them?
Well, that's the $64 million question, right? Both for Glen Canyon and for Hoover. And in terms of Hoover, there's a provision in the implementation agreement that allows for a reopening of discussions with the Bureau of Reclamation in terms of how the payment structure will be treated. To the best of my knowledge, there is not a similar provision in the Glen Canyon Agreement. But certainly all of the customers of both dams will be, I mean, are focused on the problem. And this is going to be, this is going to be tough stuff because it's everything from people proposing to blow, you know, get the water out of there by blowing up Glen Canyon Dam, have you seen those proposals, right? To much more moderate proposals, but if the drought conditions continue, there's a lot, there's a lot of trouble. And it boils, again, it boils down to money, most likely. I mean, the West is heading towards an overall shortage in power resources and a piece of it is hydropower. There are a number of other factors, including a lack of a regional market structure for the Western United States. The rest of the country has a better plan than we do in the West for how they're going to handle power shortages in a way, kind of similar to how water shortages are handled. And the answer is not known. The thing to be careful about is that under the hydropower agreements, the customers have a duty to pay a portion of the Bureau of Reclamation's cost regardless of whether there's power generation. If there's not power generation, then what happens in effect is that the customers end up paying, being at risk to pay twice because they'll have to go to the open market at the same time that everybody else is going to the open market. Joe, do you want to?
Yeah, and just to kind of speak on that, the provisions in the Hoover Contract, they have initiated talks. Gail Bates of the CRC is leading that, it's an ad hoc group, so they are also looking to form another ad hoc group for the Salt Lake City Area Integrated Project or what we refer to as SLIP, which is basically eight hydro facilities, the largest being Glen Canyon Dam and the other seven being in the Upper Basin. So, but it's, what we're looking at is this ad hoc group, what can the federal government do to step in because of the issue described about us essentially paying for the resource that's no longer there? We're not paying for the power, we're paying for a resource that's going to go away. So essentially, we could be having to pay for it twice if we stay, stay in that agreement.
We don't know yet how this is going to unfold and how people are going to come together or not. It might be helpful to just give you a very brief picture of how it worked for the Hoover Power Contracts. The Hoover Power Contracts were scheduled to expire in 2016. So back in 2006, Hoover Power customers, which there were then 15, started to think about, well, how are we going to handle this? Are we going to fight with each other about it the way we did back in the 80s and litigate and go all the way up to the US Supreme Court and then in the California versus Arizona decision and then shoot each, you know, waste our resources on basically shooting at each other through the litigation process? Or are we going to try to collaborate? And it took from 2006 until about 2008 for people to decide to actually sit down in a room and try to come up with a collaborative approach. And Larry's snickering here. And at that point, it was just the contractors, it didn't even involve the Bureau or Western yet. But it took a good year and a half of that, of meetings to just try to come, to come to a decision, we will try to collaborate. And then the group worked on developing some federal legislation that then took a couple more years to be approved by Congress. It was proposed in 09, didn't get approved until 11 and got signed by the President. And then we started the four years of contract negotiations with Western Air Power Administration and Bureau of Reclamation that resulted in us having contracts that extended the Hoover Power Resource Rights for 50 years. These contract negotiations took a great deal of work because by that time, under the revised legislation, there were 46 federal contractors and the two big federal agencies who weren't all that good at talking to each other either. And so it, it was, it was a lot of work. I think it's going to be a comparable amount of work and maybe even more difficult this time around. But it can be done, you know, there's a lot of different things that can happen if the right group of people get involved in a process that actually results in a sensible solution. The big fear of the Hoover Contractors prior to, say around 2006, was that all of the existing contractors were going to lose their access to Hoover Power because it was going to be used to firm renewables from out of state, right? That was the big bugaboo then. That problem was overcome, but now we have our next set of problems.
And, well, the one, the one thing I think that we all need to look at is that Hoover is clear, that there's a chance we would have to pay twice. And part, mostly that, well, I think, yeah, most of it's due, as I'm sure you're aware of the 1928 Appropriation Act, basically stating that power will pay for all of Hoover. Now, so I'm not sure how many other power plants have that aspect. And so the key issue is what government appropriations they have to pay for the facilities or the project. So the Boulder Canyon Project is under one set of laws and the other ones are under another set. The nice thing about Glen Canyon, well, whether it's, most of the, most of the Salt Lake or SLIP is in Glen Canyon, like everybody says, but there is some additional power that is not Glen Canyon and it's in different areas, so it depends on how it's affected by the drought. So there's a slim chance that you would have a little bit of power there, so when you're talking about that, there is a small chance that we would have some additional power instead of zero. And I think we might be able to say that we wouldn't have to at least pay all of the power because in that case, it could be that more of like a purchasing contract and we're purchasing the power, we're not buying into it. I think when you look at Hoover, we're sort of buying into Hoover. When you're doing, when we're doing the Salt Lake, we're working with a contract with you to purchase power. So you, so that's where I think.
Am I hearing you volunteering, Mr. Carr, to be the city council?
Sorry, maybe I'm going too.
Take the lead on this for city council? No, I mean, I totally agree with your analysis, you're right. The totally different statutes, different statutory frameworks, different sets of contracts, although they're similar, they're different and, but there is work to be done.
Yes, I just, but I guess what I'm hearing is everybody thinks they're the exact same aspect and I don't believe they are and I just want to make sure.
I agree.
That they understand there is, there would be some hope, maybe.
And there, and every statute can be revised as well. So the, it might well take federal action, change in the earlier federal legislation to change how Hoover's funded. That's also something that could be on the table. Okay, so just, just real quick, so let's look at what CRC does for SNWA, SSEA and Boulder City. It's actually CRC that does the contracting on behalf of SNWA and SSEA for hydropower market power. CRC that owns and operates the transmission system near the lake that is used for the transmission of power to the SSEA member agencies. CRC operates eight SNWA substations, provides electric maintenance support to Boulder City under a mutual aid agreement. And CRC is the agency that focuses on managing and advocating for and supporting Nevada's allocations of hydropower from, under the various federal contracts. CRC represents Nevada Hoover Contractors as well as Salt Lake Contractors in proceedings with WAPA and the Bureau of Reclamation and sets policy applicable to those. Here's the, the members of the CRC, some familiar names there. Like SNWA, CRC has its own executive team headed by Eric Witowski as Executive Director. You'll see Bob Reese there again and Gail. Most of the other folks are involved in the water responsibilities of CRC, with the exception of David Newton, who's a Senior Deputy Attorney General, who will be their lead attorney in all of these matters going forward. Christine Gersey has retired since this deck was put together. So under the Mutual Assistance Agreement with CRC, Boulder City has the option to request assistance for its utility staff by providing labor, equipment and materials for emergency repair, emergency operations of Boulder City's electric utility system. Mutual agreement, I mean mutual aid agreements are very common in the electric industry. They are generally cost-based agreements, so it's a way to get help quick by knowledgeable people who aren't going to apply a profit motive to what they, to whatever costs they incur in helping you out. And that's, that's really the purpose of these mutual assistance agreements, including the one with, between Boulder City. So it's a cost reimbursement basis with no additional profit or subsidy included. So when you think about, do you want to hire, there will be times when you'll need to hire a specialty contractor for electric work, but if it's something that CRC can help you with, you can get, you can get it on a, on a cost reimbursement basis. Okay, real quick look at the hydropower contracts. Under the federal contracts, Boulder City is, you know, you've been in this game since the very beginning. And the agreements allocate hydropower, which has a couple of different components, energy, capacity and ancillary services. They're cost-based rates with, like the Mutual Assistance Agreement, no profit factor added. And they do allow for power rates to be revised periodically through proceedings conducted by Western Air Power Administration. And all contractors are welcome to participate in the proceedings. It's different from, you know, I used to be at the PUC, it's different from PUC rat-making in terms of how the cost allocations work and how decisions are made, but there's also a lot in common with it, which is you base, you just look at all the costs incurred in providing the service, identify the total amount of costs involved and then do a separate part of the proceeding, looking at how the costs are going to be shared. And then periodically, there are additional proceedings unrelated to the general rate proceedings when, for example, the Bureau was interested in helping Hoover to generate at lower water levels and that required installation of low-head turbines. Low-head turbines are not inexpensive, so there had to be a whole series of proceedings and discussions with the contractors on, well, were we going to buy one in this year? Are we going to buy two six years out? Are we going to buy another one three years after that? And it kind of gets feathered in over time. I think we've already covered that last point. Current drought conditions do jeopardize future hydropower generation and is likely to increase the city's electric power costs in the future. Okay, so there's three post-2016 Hoover Power Agreements. The federal electric service contract, the state electric service contract between Boulder City and CRC, which is the federal contractor, and then also the implementation agreement for the federal contract. These contracts are, were the product of almost nine years of work. Mr. Carr was involved in a lot of it, I was involved in a lot of it. And you could just imagine the complexity of trying to address this with 46 contractors and two big agencies. The, we can, if somebody at some point wants to delve into that, you know, we can certainly do that, but that would be at least another hour and a half worth of conversation today and probably, we don't want to go there right now. But they're very interesting, they are very interesting documents. Okay, so 50 years, contractors, including Boulder City, can claim the benefit of what was defined as in quotes, environmental attributes, which include renewable energy credits, provide for contingency planning if the water level drops. And that's where the big work is going to have to be done, it's going to be controversial, it's going to be expensive, just start thinking about what you want to do in terms of defending your interests there. And then it also provides the opportunity for contractors like Boulder City and all the other, the 45 other contractors, to meet with Western and the Bureau regarding the full range of cost containment opportunities, such as, at some point, will the Bureau have to lay off employees? Those kinds of questions, difficult questions have to be addressed. They also, it provides for collaboratives on hydrology data and pressing reclamation to look at other funding sources, which is kind of where we were getting to, Mr. Carr, and then other operational or adverse impacts to Hoover. Then the last one that we'll talk about today is the hydropower for the, there actually should be, where it's a Salt Lake City Area Integrated, there should be projects, there should be an S on there. And it allocates Glen Canyon's hydropower and the other projects up there. It does include the provision for the value of environmental attributes, cost-based rates, and that term goes out to 57. So thank you for your attention. I know this is a lot of material to throw at you and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them if I can.
And, first of all, is there any, are there any conversations going on to perhaps enhance the water supply into the West, like from the Columbia River Basin? I've heard even maybe from the Mississippi River, which is a far-fetched, but possibly out of Missouri River or something like that, I don't exactly know about that.
There's lots of conversation. I personally, my favorite option is to create, you know, a very, like a very thin shim that we just put under the eastern coast of the United States, just a little bit to get it rolling west. Little issue with the continental divide, have the same issue with the Mississippi River water, right? So there's a lot of conversations, I haven't heard anything definitive.
Yeah, I just read an article about the Platte River in Colorado, which heads east. Guess what? It's running out of water as well. So I, again, I know there's all these discussions about, you know, SNWA invested millions of dollars in buying up Eastern Nevada and all that water was going to come here and none of it comes here. So it's a problem. You made that comment, that this is a problem in the Western United States. Monday is the deadline for Arizona, Nevada and California to submit their plan to the federal government on what we're going to do. I think that's going to be a rather thin reply and as Mr. Ensminger had said, the federal government doesn't have scalpels, they have swords to fix these problems. So we'll see what's going to happen on Monday. I appreciate very much your expertise, you know, it was a recommendation of our city attorney to put you under retainer to look at these things. I know a lot of times when we ask about certain things, they may be things that were never contemplated when these agreements were written and that's where your background and knowledge, I think, is going to be very helpful to our community. But this is very real and. But this is very real, and, you know, everybody has talked about these things for a while. The levels that we're seeing Lake Mead drop to now, in just this past year, are very concerning. And I would like to see our city start looking at what we are going to do, because chances are, the power's not, there's not going to be a switch that somebody flips at Hoover Dam to turn the power on or off. It will be a slow degradation of the ability of the dam to produce power. I think we need to look at, what is Boulder City going to do in regards to things like community solar and all that? So I appreciate the discussion you had, as far as, these agreements that we have with others don't preclude us from pursuing solutions of our own. And I think that that's something that, as a community, we need to take much more seriously, and start looking at what we may be able to do, whether it's collaboration with existing solar partners that we've been working with for years, or something the community does. But we do know that whatever is done is going to require some type of legal agreement. So your expertise is very much a benefit to us. I appreciate this overview. Is there anyone who has other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
It's not working. I can talk on that. I just wanted to thank our city attorney for making this recommendation. This was fascinating, and I've been listening to these, you know, to the scary stories of what we're going to be looking at, and the way this was just presented, and to know that there's somebody that's going to be working with the city who has a level of knowledge that you do, it's just really interesting. Because there are simple answers that people come up with, you know, let's just conserve, let's just, you know, and, you know, I was looking at Lincoln County, that's part of the power agreement, and, you know, they built their own solar, but it only serves about 65 households. I mean, so it's, you know, we need big solutions, and, and again, thank you, you know, it's, this was recommendation from our attorney to bring in somebody from the outside, to not just look at contracts, but to be able to make a presentation like you did, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the fact that you're interested and willing to grapple with these things, because in my experience, that's often not the case for folks who, you know, are in your kinds of jobs. This is great, that you're even willing to schedule this, I really appreciate it.
Well, you know, I've often thought about when they were building Hoover Dam, I've been told that there was a turbine that was put in there, and it provided power to Boulder City. And it's like, you know, if I just spent five years building the largest dam in the world, I would want some of that electricity at my house. So when we do talk about these things, we're talking about our own electricity, our own air conditioners, or, you know, all of those things. And again, we're in a situation, and it's not just Boulder City, it's not just Lake Mead. As you mentioned, this is an issue for the Western United States. So I, again, I think we need to take this very, very seriously, and having you provide the information to us on what these contracts are, and especially the part that, you know, we can go look for our own solutions. We are in a position where we can work with others, and that's fantastic, but, you know, we're getting to a point where people really need to start looking for their own solutions as well, and then see if there's a collaborative effort that can help out. Matter of fact, one of the solar projects that was recently completed here is an SNWA project. So there are things out there that are being done, it's going to depend on how quickly we need to do them.
Okay, well, great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
I'd just like to say, on behalf of the Utility Committee, thank you also.
Thank you.
All right, we will have our final public comment period. Public comment during the final period may be on any issue. No action may be taken on issues that are raised. Speakers will have up to five minutes, and as always, we ask people to be civil and concise. Anyone present that would like to speak? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is the final public comment period for the joint workshop with the city council and utility advisory committee. Anyone wishing to call, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
Hi, yeah, my name is George Reed, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just, obviously, I think some of you guys know me, but I'm a scientist, and I just wanted to comment on the fact that, first of all, we're not in this situation by coincidence. It might be tempting to think, well, this is a bad spin, you know, we were just unlucky, unforeseen things happened, but what happened is they plugged the wrong numbers. A hundred years ago, in November, the agreement was reached between the seven basin states, and the numbers that were plugged in were wrong. And they were told at the time, but the fact that the numbers were wrong didn't really matter. What mattered is the uncertainties in the numbers. And the fact was that in 1922, we did not know the long-term flow of the Colorado River. So it was assumed that it was 17, because it had been 17 for the last 10 years in millions of acre-feet per year. But in fact, the uncertainties in that number were very large, plus or minus 5 million acre-feet. So the numbers that we're seeing now are actually consistent with the uncertainties back then. So the whole game is dealing with risk and uncertainty. Secondly, the drought that we're seeing now was predicted by the scientists. It was predicted in the 1990s that there would be aridification. Again, we're not the victims of being blindsided by circumstances beyond our control, we're the victims of not listening to the predictions of the climate scientists. And the predictions are that the aridification will continue. Now, indeed, on, I think, August 16th or something, the Bureau of Reclamation said they need to make cuts, the basin states need to agree on cuts between 2 to 4 million acre-feet. But that's not enough, when you look at the numbers. When you look at what's been coming in, it's been about 5 million acre-feet. The system, according to SNWA's numbers, is using 14 million acre-feet. You have roughly a 10 million acre-feet mismatch between supply and demand. Powell, right now, Lake Powell, which doesn't seem to unduly concern people, although, again, I predicted the problems with these electric agreements. In 2019, when they were signed by a member of the council who's sitting there right now, I said, please, at least discuss this. And that was refused, that was a gigantic error of judgment in the light of my prediction coming true. But Powell is dropping at one foot a week right now. It's at about 30 feet away from not producing any electric power. So I think one of the problems with these spaghetti agreements of saying, well, it's very complicated, and CRC talks to SSE, talks to SNWA, SNWA is the last, and we have to spend, you know, months or years disentagling these agreements, is you don't have time. The timescales are highly relevant. The system is collapsing on a timescale of months. And I'm sorry to burden you with this, probably everyone knows that that's my opinion, but for any citizens listening, I think I would encourage you, as citizens, to participate in our grassroots efforts to fix this problem. Because what is being discussed here in this room is not going to get fixed on the relevant timescales, which are basically weeks, you know? 30 feet divided by one foot a week is 30 weeks. And if we don't cut dramatically by 60% across the board, we're not, we're going to drain both of these reservoirs. And that's something you don't want to do. You not only do not want to drain them, you want to replenish them. Otherwise, the risks are enormous. Anyway, my thoughts are just a plea to please listen to the scientists, because science is an early warning system that gives you more time to act. If you ignore the science, you find yourself panicking at the last minute, which I still don't sense in this room the required sense of concern about this, about the fact that we've got weeks, not years, to fix this problem. And we're embedded in a larger system that's collapsing. Anyway, thank you for your attention, and I hope citizens are listening to this on the web, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to call? Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment?
None were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no others, we will close the final public comment period. Again, Ms. Palmgrance, I really want to express our appreciation for your presentation, your knowledge, staff as well. I think we have work cut out for all of us. With that, we are adjourned, thank you all.